All right, we'll go ahead and call our meeting in order. West O'Conne County Board of Commissioners meeting today is Tuesday, May 4th, 2021. If you're joining us virtually to comment during the public comment portions of the meeting, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom. After a moment of silence, we're going to ask Mark Saxon to lead us in the pledge. Please stand. Our first item of business will be to approve the agenda. We'd like to ask for a change to add between item of approval amendments and rezonings to add the formant of the county clerk.
I make a motion to approve the agenda and with the modification that's cited.
A motion second, all in favor?
Ah.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next item is any statements and remarks from citizens. This is for anything that is not on our agenda for tonight. Anyone virtually? Any statements or remarks from commissioners? Just reminder, beginning May 1st, the EPD has issued a burn ban for all the 54 counties in the ozone area. That means no burning from October 1st through September 30th. This has been in place since 2005. Just as a note, there's no household burning of any, any type in O'Conne County at any time. Didn't want to take a minute here to recognize Ms. Kathy Hayes. She's announced her retirement at the end of this month. And she will be leaving us and have done a really good job and we will be. Next item of business is to approve the minutes. This is from our regular meeting on April 6th and our agenda setting meeting on April 27th. Motion second, all in favor?
Ah.
Thank you. Motion carries. So our next item is the formant for the county clerk. Oh, we're pleased to announce that we have come to an agreement with Holly Stevenson to be the new O'Conne County clerk. This will be effective May 24th. Holly is a native of O'Conne County, served as the risk and liability specialist for Walton County Board of Commissioners since 2013. As a bachelor in business administration and risk management insurance from UGA and as a graduate of the Walton, Walton County Chamber of Commerce Leadership Walton Program. In addition, she has earned a human resources certification from Carl Vincent Institute of Government. So Holly, if you'd come up and let everybody see who you are. So with that, we'll entertain a motion to appoint Holly as the county clerk effective May 24th.
I'll make that motion.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Ah.
Thank you. Motion carries. Now we're going to move into our hearings and actions on zoning matters, zoning matters. The reason petition will be presented by staff with no time limit. Appliance applicant and those signed up to speak for the petition shall be allowed a total of 20 minutes, less the applicant's reserve time for rebuttal. Those signed up to speak against the petition shall also be allowed a total of 20 minutes. The public comment section will then be closed and the board have opportunity to ask questions as they find appropriate. And then the board will take action as set out in Unified Development Code. With that, we'll go into our first reason matter, which is reason number P200210. This is for Mars Hill Road, O'Conne Connector, Georgia Highway 316, Virgil Langford Road. It's 46.87. The request is go from R1, B1, PUD and B2 to go to a B2 for the development of a shopping center. Yeah?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, this is reason P200210 just off of 316 and the O'Conne Connector. This is the aerial photograph of the three parcels, the subject parcels. Currently zoned B1, B2 and R1. It is in the regional center character area. And this is the existing concept plan that the property is currently zoned B1 for this portion. The B2 is in this location. And then the R1 is in this location. This is roughly 300,000 square feet of office. This is roughly 50,000 square feet of, actually total 300,000 square feet of retail in that portion and then B1 office in the, in the larger tract. And then of course, the R1 residential lots proposed here. Again, the R1 lots. And the B2 portion that was zoned in 1988. And again, the reason, the request is the reason of the property from R1 and B1 PUD to, and B2 to B2. Highway Business District for Development of Shopping Center, Grocery Store, Retail, Restaurants and Hotel Uses. The planning commission recommended denial of requests on back in January of this year. The applicant requested the delay, the BOC hearing to allow time response to input from staff, planning commission and the public. When the BOC returned the application to the planning commission for additional comment. In addition, documentation regarding the proposed project access was submitted by the applicant and forwarded to the planning commission and the board. This is the proposed concept plan that was submitted with the application. Again, the renderings of the architectural standards proposed. And some of the color representations. And again, the staff recommended conditional approval subject to 20 conditions. And the planning commission has recommended denial again. So there are two recommendations of the planning commission. Thanks, sir.
Now we're here from the owner or the agent of the owner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Ken Bell, Bell and Company, and our firm was engaged to assist in the presentation and the preparation of documents associated with this request is before you this evening. Appreciate the opportunity to come before you and make this presentation. First, I would, the council for the property owner has asked that I read this paragraph. Please include in the record for this hearing, the applicant's application and attached materials. Bill Berryman's letter to the commissioners dated March the 2nd, 2021, and all attachments in tonight's visual presentation. And all written materials that are shown or referred to in the presentation. This first slide is just a slide of, that's the overall comprehensive plan or future land use map down in the, in the right-hand corner. And that's an enlargement highlighting the regional center character area and then the subject property that fronts on Highway 316 and the O'Conne Connector and Mars Hill Road shown with the red outline. The requested rezone is a B2 shopping center subdivision with a Publix grocery store and village being the anchor of the development. There are 12 other lots in addition to the lot on which Publix will be located. This basically is no different in layout today than the original plan that was submitted. The planning department did not request that a new plan be prepared. The planning department recommended 20 conditions, 15 of which are agreed to without comment. And the only reason why the other comments had, had not been agreed to previously was that they had to do with access. They had to do with specific access. And some of those access recommendations potentially conflicted with earlier agreements that relate to memorandums of agreement on the property dating back to 1997. And so one of the things that we've attempted to do is to address the access and better ways of accessing the property potentially than was originally suggested on the original plan that was submitted with the rezone request. This is a, an enlargement of plan. Again, it's, it's public shopping center. The main difference between this plan and the original plan is that rather than the signalized intersection that was proposed on the O'Conne Connector. We've replaced that with a roundabout. There is a recommendation in the staff report about a ride-in, ride-out only. And a deceleration lane in the O'Conne Connector, on the O'Conne Connector, excuse me. If a roundabout goes in, there would be no need for a, a right turn lane. And if a roundabout goes in, all turns are going to be right. So in a way, it would meet the requirement of the ride-in, ride-out. But again, as I said, all turns will be right turns. That's the primary access from up to the project from the O'Conne Connector. It's a simple plan and it only has one access road on the O'Conne Connector and one access road off of Mars Hill Road. We evaluated this project in comparison to other projects that have been approved on the O'Conne Connector. And the intensity of development measured by the building square footage per acre of development. There's a hotel, B2 hotel site directly across O'Conne Connector at the median break today. That property was rezoned for 27,000, over 27,000 square feet per acre. Connector 1357, that's on the other side of Highway 316 and adjacent to the Paul Brown Parkway on the left of the connector. Was developed out at over 10,000 square feet per acre. A recent retirement community approved last year Celebration Village over on the leg of the connector that's in front of Hope Depot was developed, developed at over 10,000 square feet per acre. Research Quarter, which was approved about two years ago and construction plans are currently under review. Fronting on the Paul Brown Parkway and the O'Conne Connector was at 9,000 square feet. And the subject reason request is 6,800 plus, which is very comparable to the Epps Bridge Center on the other side of the Paul Brown Parkway, which is 6,500 plus. So the difference in magnitude of development on the two lower properties that are very similar is one for that which is approved for the top one. So these are in hierarchy of from the most intense to the least intense development. After quite a bit of discussions with members of the community and residents of neighboring properties and pastor of Mars Hill Church and attendees of Mars Hill Church. We offer this updated plan as an alternate to two of the conditions that are recommended by the staff report. And this modified plan addresses traffic flow on Mars Hill Road on the O'Conne Connector. Traffic flow interior to the project and it addresses the project environmentally and aesthetically as well. On the Mars Hill Road. Recommendation from the planning department was that they're not just the planning department, but I think the planning, a, a traffic consultant that the planning department work, works also with recommending, excuse me, recommended that there be two roundabouts. And one ride-in, ride-out on Mars Hill Road. On an earlier version of this plan, one which we used to illustrate the possibility of roundabouts on Mars Hill Road. The roundabout was located at Deandra Drive. We'd met with people at Deandra, who live on Deandra Drive. They weren't happy about the roundabout. And they were not happy about the ability for traffic to come straight across the street and into their subdivision. And the pastor of Mars Hill Road, Mars Hill Baptist Church was not happy with the roundabout at that location and preferred that it be located elsewhere. So we modified that location to another intersection on the Mars Hill Road that we think will function adequately. And one which would allow those who come out to actually make a right turn to take a left turn on the roundabout. And we've limited all other driveways that come out on Mars Hill Road to be right in, right out. So any vehicles that come into the project have the ability to go out either of the two roundabouts. To basically turn right and go left and all other driveways would be a ride-in, ride-out only. And being such would not inhibit or impede any traffic on the Mars Hill Road. Now internally, there was another recommendation about a roundabout. We also call them traffic circles to be located at the intersection of the two roads that come into the project. Both of these roads are private roads designed to be private roads. So anyone accessing the property going north or south would go around a portion of the roundabout and then make a right-hand turn into the belt. Anyone leaving the property would do the same thing. They'd get, make a right hand to go out and continue around to make another right-hand turn to go whatever direction they want to go to. In leaving to go out on the Mars Hill cul-de-sac. As an option, they could go down and make a right turn at any of the three driveways and go right or left from the roundabout located on Mars Hill Road. The primary entrance of the project is planned to be from the O'Conne Connector. And the secondary entrance to the project is to be from the one roundabout to be located on Mars Hill Road and the three ride-in, ride-out driveways. If you look closely just below where you see the pond illustrated in blue. There is a, a ride-in, ride-out driveway at that location. The next access is the roundabout. The next access would be a primary driveway getting to the front of the building and allow the, allowing vehicles to exit and go to the right on, on Mars Hill Road. And then the last access would be across from Deandra, but, but at that entrance as well, it's a ride-in, ride-out only. Which would not allow any direct across Mars Hill Road access to Deandra. Or Deandra, as I am told is the proper pronunciation. The other thing that we wanted to address in the project is that to restore what used to be a functional farm pond back in the day when all of this area was agriculturally used. There is a low drainage corridor that extended from the upper left or western side of the property. Where all the fields used to drain to and, and it was dammed up down here above the O'Conne Connector. And of course, that water was used as most farms for agricultural purposes. Now in 1997, when there was a memorandum of agreement consummated between O'Conne County and the former owners of the property. There was wording in that agreement that the dam would be drained. And it potentially could be filled and it could become the access to the site as well. But when the pond was drained for the construction of the first leg of the O'Conne Connector, it actually wasn't entirely drained. The dam was taken out of it and it was reduced in size by about two-thirds down to what it is today. But it wasn't completely drained. The O'Conne Connector was built and, and then when the second leg of it was constructed about a 14 to 16 foot retaining wall approximately from the corner of Mars Hill Road up to the roundabout is where that retaining wall is located. So there was a driveway that was agreed to in an earlier agreement opposite the QT driveway on the other side of the O'Conne Connector. That clearly can't be an access point with a 14-foot retaining wall there now. So what we plan to do is recreate the pond, make it into a feature, not just for this project, but for this entire area. Put a fountain in it, make it into a, a lustily landscaped attractive corner, something that you'll have to notice every time you drive by. And we also plan to implement what's known as green infrastructure in the project. Green infrastructure is something that is recommended by the EPD, but is, is actually not a requirement that is imposed by the EPD. But the EBT, EPD recommends that any codes that restrict the use of green implement, green infrastructure should be modified so that it encourages green infrastructure. So although the pond itself will be designed to be a live pond with water all the time. And it will handle the, the water quality necessary for this end of the project. We wanted to go a little further and include a condition in the reason that actually says that every lot that's developed in this project will implement at least one component of green infrastructure on each lot in the development, when it's developed. And that's just to address further concerns about potential water. And that's just to address further concerns about potential water quality in Barber Creek. Now Barber Creek is down the road, down the Oconee Connector from this project. New culverts were put in in the Oconee Connector when the Mars Hill Parkway was installed. That's on the lower left hand corner is one of the box culverts at the corner of the subject property and the photograph above that is that retaining wall that I was telling you about a few minutes ago. And the remnant of the pond that's left. The other two photographs on the right are the photographs of what used to be the bottom of the pond. But now it's just a wet marshy area that really never dries up between rains. Can you go to the next slide? And these are other photographs showing the lower left is is toward the north or the far upstream edge, then there's a mud flat at the very end of it, and then those are just there's an ephemeral corridor and then just sheet flow coming from the subject property. Now, once the project is developed with green infrastructure, then these are examples of the green infrastructure that will be installed in every lot to be developed on the property. Next slide. As I mentioned before, we've only suggested that we modify two of the conditions in the that were originally in the staff report. Next slide please. One is to allow the permitting of of a roundabout, a two lane roundabout on the Oconee Connector. And the developer would like to take all the funds that they'd originally planned for the signalization and for the right turn lane and contribute those toward that. Next slide please. And they'd like to modify the condition about the two roundabouts on Mars Hill Road to be one single roundabout. And three private access drives that would all be right in, right out. And again, take the money that would have been spent on a central turn lane and and other right away improvements and dedicate that toward the purpose of a roundabout on Mars Hill Road. Next slide please. And we're also willing to agree to two additional conditions. One is that there be a three year delay on building permits on the second phase of the project and the other one that we would implement this bio. The green infrastructure in the form of bio retention, bio infiltration, rain gardens and similar matters. Next slide. There is a history to this project. This slide just shows where driveways were previously located in case we need to talk about those, if there are any questions. And where the access points were to the Oconee Connector were originally agreed to in nineteen ninety seven. And then there were letters going back to nineteen ninety seven from the head of the Georgia Department of Transportation reaffirmed in two thousand nine and then reaffirmed again to maintain the access, full access for the median break. Most recently on April the eighth of this year. Next slide. That's my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any and thank you. Yes, thank you very much.
So there's no additional time for public comments for the now we'll move to those speaking against. First on the list is Dan Matthews.
Good evening, I apologize in advance. Kind of phone cancer issue and my voice is not quite up to its normal volume and if there's anything I say that you need me to repeat on behalf of the new it, I won't take any offense. I'm just like to say that I don't think this project is needed. I appreciate everyone who's come to this room, come to this gathering, one on a mask and especially their opinion about what's going on here tonight, but I don't think it's something that Oconee County wants. I'm sure you're familiar with a website called Nextdoor. I've got a section on there, it's Cape Watkinsville, wonderful. We had a poll on there today and my six to one margin, it was people not wanting this rezon, wanting to vote against it. It's not the most scientific poll in the world, but it's the number of folks who responded in a very short time that indicated they don't want this to happen. I don't think it's very good for Oconee County. If it were something like Costco. Remember Costco, everybody? Costco if it was Costco there.
Need to address the board of commissioners.
Sorry. If it was Costco. You wouldn't have anyone complaining. You wouldn't have anyone opposed to it. It's not Costco, it's Publix and there's another Publix six blocks away. I don't think it's needed, I don't think it's wanted, I don't think it's warranted. And I strongly advise each one of you to vote against it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next we have Jennifer Walker.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Jennifer Walker. I live on twelve oh one Day Andrew Drive in Watkinsville. I have some slides I would like to present to you this evening. I thank you for your time and your attention. All right. So in regards to our presentation tonight, my brief presentation, I am representing a community group of Mars Hill for Responsible Development. Even in light of what Mr. Ken Bell has presented tonight, we still have a response as a repose to this development and I've proposed to bring a few points of interest for y'all to consider. Tonight, I believe you are going to be discussing the twenty twenty one through twenty twenty four strategic plan. Your strategic goal number two shows smart growth, growth that fits Oconee County. Your objective one says adopt and implement priorities of the comprehensive plan. So as a review of the twenty eighteen Oconee County Joint Comprehensive Plan, I want to point out the transportation notation here. Where appropriate, increase the capacity of a road network in a strategic way that can help guide growth as well as residential uses that protect and enhance existing neighborhoods through code enforcement, beautification and application of architectural standards. Last, the regional center that is noted here requires buffers to protect lower density residential areas within and near the character area that would be impacted by higher density and commercial development. In light of this strategic plan that you'll be discussing and wanting to implement over the next four years, I do want to point out some of the transportation concerns, even in light of what Mr. Bell has presented. Now, I do want to acknowledge the changes that Mr. Bell has tried to address our concerns for traffic and I greatly, greatly appreciate his efforts on behalf of the project owner. However, there are still some legitimate concerns. This is a Georgia Department of Transportation image that we were acquired through an open records request indicating the in blue at the bottom, the existing traffic light at Mars Hill and Oconee Connector. And then at the top, in light of the future flyover by the Georgia Department of Transportation, potentially two additional flyover lights that would be implemented. The proposed light, median, or now roundabout, as you can see, is pretty sandwiched in between these intersections. This would cause still in our mindset, a significant traffic congestion and some safety issues as far as its location. And we don't even think that as just county county citizens. Again, with the open records request, we secured this email from Andrew Honig. He is one of the engineers under Meg Perkel at the Georgia Department of Transportation. As you can see in the email, they have reviewed in light of Meg Perkel's request for the access for this median break on Oconee Connector. And as I highlight in bolder text in the lower right, according to the the review of this proposal, it would result with a median break. And again, we asked, would this still be in the case for a roundabout? Would result in substandard design even in urban setting setting. Also in this email, he's noted potential development root result and above nominal traffic. And then final conclusion that both the project delivery team and District One would recommend closing median access and providing a right in, right out scenario. But again, in light of this roundabout, we still ask, would this still be legitimate? Now, in interestingly enough, Meg Perkel decided to overrule this this action by or this email by Andrew Hoig Honig and instead provide median access to the project. Now, I believe Ms. Meg Perkel is doing this in best interest of the Georgia Department of Transportation. But gentlemen, I ask, as a Coney County Board of Commissioners, are we keeping a Coney County interest at heart and not Georgia Department of Transportation? So I do question whether or not this median break and now even this roundabout would still be in alignment with what the Georgia Department Engineers have agreed to, even though Ms. Meg Perkel has decided to go around this recommendation and still acquire and allow for this median break. The entrances on the Mars Hill Road, I do again acknowledge the changes that Mr. Ken Bell has proposed. But we're still looking at a massive project on the corner right where residential and agriculture settings are provided. So there's no buffering indicated in that budget, that project proposal, aside from the additional green space on the Mars Hill Road. So at the heart of this issue is the rezon. We do understand that B one would allow Publix to be built and would provide appropriate buffering as in the comprehensive plan. We do argue that the maintaining of that R one, however, will still allow protecting and enhancing existing neighborhoods as well as the church that is on Mars Hill. All right, so with this, I want to go ahead and give over my time to my, the next colleague on the on the list to discuss this rezon. And again, we are proposing that the rezon be denied and instead be one be zoned as for both B one and B two zoning.
Thank you. Next we have Chris Harry.
Hey, thanks for having us and good to see you guys, everyone. So these slides, pictures are from the developer's website. I really liked them. I like the flowers, the grass, the trees on the left. No cars, they're houses, though, it's a neighborhood. And the low buildings and very few cars on the right hand side. But this is not representative of the requested B two zoning. We're really here for the B two zoning request. The, again, I appreciate the roundabout discussion as well, but it's all about the B two zoning. That's why we're here, I think. B two zoning allows by right hotels and motels, transportation services, drive through restaurants, car boat RB dealers, auto repair maintenance and many others. This is from our county's unified development code. B two zoning opens a Pandora's box of future rights, use is not appropriate for residential neighborhood. Road, Mars Hill Road is not a highway, it is an agricultural road with no shoulders. This is what B two zoning means. It means hotels on high ground. The part of the the proposal that has the B two type elements are on the high ground of this property. If you think about from the intersection going up Mars Hill Road, you're going uphill. And these bring about lots of traffic issues on certain days of the year. B two zoning means drive through restaurants or parking lots that are really long and narrow, as in this case. B two zoning means car dealerships. Is this what we want as the welcome to Oconee gateway into the county? From Oconee County's Regional Center Comprehensive Plan, transitions and intensity development should be established approaching the boundaries whenever possible. Moving in gradations from high intensity regional office parks and retail shopping centers down to low intensity, single family neighborhoods, major buffering should be established through zoning. This is a picture of the property. Thank you, Oconee observations. I took this off your website. There's a Boswell sign in the corner and there's Mars Hill Road going to the left. Notice the road is pretty narrow and small compared to everything around it, no shoulders at all. And the proposal is all of this is B two now, that's the proposal. And this is what it would mean. The B two businesses are targeted for the R one side of the property, which is surrounded not by residential but by AG and AR parcels. B two zoning is not a buffer or transition as described in the comprehensive plan. It is a brick wall transition, if anything. Mars Hill Road is a narrow, no shoulder farm road and cannot support this zoning. By the way, B one supports Publix. Everybody likes a good apple fritter. I'm okay with that as well. I like Publix for that. We recommend the developer consider rezon of the B two parcel to B one to support Publix. And just I thought everyone should understand there's a no truck sign right there. And so I don't know how the auto dealers are going to get their cars up there in their in the car lot. The developer asserts that current zoning is not economically viable. B one supports Publix, so by definition it is viable. So what about that R one parcel? Let's examine this. So Charles Landing is a great case study. It's just down the road on Mars Hill, it's at the corner of Long Road and Mars Hill Road across from Meridian subdivision. It's ten acres. This is also part of the regional center future development on the Oconee County Strategic Plan. And it was rezoned from AG to R one. This was done in September of two thousand nineteen, nine home lots, estimated value seven million, average home price, three quarters of a million, probably a lot more today. Definition of R one, single family resident, I'll kind of concentrate on the last part of the sentence there. To discourage any use which would generate other than residential traffic on minor streets like Mars Hill Road and to protect the order for orderly future development of land. That sounds like a great transition buffer to me. This is what's there now. It's got AG to the west and northwest. There's the church property, which is AG. And all of that residential down there on a lot of plans, I've seen this as R one, it is not R one, it is AR. We can have a cow or a horse on our property if we want. And everything from Mars Hill Road, Oconee Connector on the right, up the hill on Mars Hill Road is either AR or AG in the zoning right now. And the definition of AR, the regulations are intended to allow median rural residential densities and compatible agricultural activities without encouraging commercial development or multifamily development. I've got the note there nineteen eighty nine is before nineteen ninety seven. So everyone that's bought or lived or currently living in this development, this was all decided in the late eighties. That's before the letter that that Mr. Beal references in ninety seven, it's before the follow up letters in two thousand nine. It's before the letter from Mrs. Perkel just a month ago in twenty twenty one. So those that are living here would have some expectation that there would be something that buffers commercial development that's around them. So R one is appropriate. There's the example from Charles Place I showed. But it's given it was purchased with that intent and it's not up to the county or its citizens to make whole the developer that bought at the wrong time in the market and for the wrong assumptions. We maintain that R one zoning is appropriate for the R one plat, it is economically viable and it acts as a transition with the surrounding AG and AR zone. And this is not an NIMBY issue. I'm okay with the B one as it is, the first plot that Guy Herring showed, great, wonderful, we wouldn't be here right now. It's all about the B two in my mind. It is not appropriate for B two and what it and what it allows. So we are, we're for the responsible development and character with the surrounding neighborhood based on the collaborative communication with the stakeholders involved. And the development as proposed has become a focal point for many in the nearby residential neighborhoods, the county and now the region. It's also been in the news. Some of it might be concerning, especially the headlines with respect to the decisions made for this development. These are some of the articles that I pulled over the last weeks. This is from Atlanta Journal Constitution article by David Wicker just last week. Georgia DOT officials involvement in shopping center raises concerns. Wicker refers to William Perry, founder of the group Georgia Ethics Watch Dogs and and Perry's got some observations on some involvement that that may also cause concern with these decisions in the process. So Jennifer Walker and I presented a reminder of Oconee County Strategic Plan Growth Initiatives, including transition buffers, traffic concerns and DOT committee and staff professional engineers prior recommendation against the meeting cut. B two zoning's Pandora box of car dealers, hotels and drive-throughs on Mars Hill Road, which is a farm road. I say it's a farm road because there's AG and AR all around it. That's what it is. R one is economically viable, but the example I gave is a good one, I think. And provides a transition buffer. We ask that you deny the rezon request. We're not denying Publix or whatever being built in B one, great. The current zoning is right for Publix, right for the community and right for Oconee County. And once again, because this is in the the stuff to the board of commissioners, the the constitutional rights notice. I'm going to once again say we do not waive any rights to related to the process or the decisions coming from this process. I'm going to once again say we do not waive any rights to related to the process or the decisions coming from this process. I really do appreciate your time and thoughts on this matter.
Wilder Bailey.
Hey, my name's Wilder Bailey. I live on Dander Drive in Watkinsville. Been there over 30 years. And so have a keen interest in, in Elkhorni County and the neighborhood. A little, I want to speak to traffic. Yes, sir. I'm sorry.
Yeah, five minutes.
Five minutes. Thank you. So I, I want to speak to the, the reality of, of what may happen should this thing be approved. My compatriots have presented the, the, all the facts extraordinarily well. So here we go. In 2013, 4,735 pedestrians were killed in the U.S. by automobiles. And 55% of these were fatalities occurred in, on neighborhood streets. I speak to that because when the, when the light was added, the traffic light was added at the corner last couple of years, right out of my neighborhood. We had the pleasure of having three to five times the amount of cut-through traffic coming through our neighborhood, which destroyed my mailbox about twice. So for every pedestrian killed by a car, another 15 were injured. A key factor contributing to the high pedestrian accident rate on neighborhood streets include lack of adequate sidewalks, bike lanes, and crossings. Traffic noise can interfere with sleep, conversation, and other neighborhood pursuits. About nine and a half percent, 9.5% of us are exposed to traffic noise at a level which affects health. One of the reason to move to Elkhorni County many years ago was to avoid some of these problems. One study shows that a 10 decibel higher noise level in homes means that the risk of high blood pressure increases by 6%. And the risk of blood clots increase by 6 to 8%. Again, these are some of the reasons we live in Elkhorni County. Mars Hill Road was not designed to accommodate even the existing traffic. And certainly not safely and adequately handle the, the proposed problems with additional traffic. Of all our roads, neighborhood streets have the highest accident rate. And these accidents involve a substantially higher percentage of pedestrians and cyclists when compared to those occurring on other roads. Excessive cut-through traffic is a key factor jeopardizing the safety of our neighborhoods. And for the record, we do not want speed brakes for me to have to go through 10 times a day. This cut-through traffic makes neighborhood streets noisier and more dangerous. Cut-through traffic tends to operate at a higher speed, which increases the likelihood of accidents and the severity of injury. As speed increases, driver field of vision narrows, which makes it more likely pedestrians will not be seen until it's too late to avoid an accident. A car traveling at 30 miles an hour requires twice the distance to stop as compared to 20 miles an hour. Many of us walk on Dander Drive for exercise. We are very aware of the impact of cut-through traffic. Unfortunately, many cut-through drivers are not at all concerned with safety and travel much too fast in our neighborhood. Last but not least, I want to speak regarding Mars Hill Baptist Church for a minute. Mars Hill Baptist Church has been around longer than I've been there. They started in 1799, very near its present-day location. In addition to church services, Mars Hill Preschool Academy began in 2007. The curriculum is Christian-based and aims to teach children the sorely needed ABCs of faith. I mention the church for many reasons. I take great pride in being a neighbor of the church. Having had the experience of my own children receiving the benefits of a loving Christian preschool, I know firsthand the contribution Mars Hill is making to countless children and families. The church leadership today is led by people who have called Mars Hill Baptist Church home for generations. In addition, the school has over 150 parents drop by twice each day to drop off and pick up their children in the preschool. The proposed development would impact countless people in a negative way, not the least of which would, would be how, would impact the church and the school at Mars Hill Baptist Church. Noise from the existing traffic on Mars Hill Road is not at all desirable. Adding substantial noise to the already busy road during the times of church services would further degrade the atmosphere in the church. And adds considerable safety issues due to the demands of considerable new traffic. Additionally, these 150-plus families twice daily to drop off and pick up their children would face the increased challenge of traffic safety, as well as the noise from the additional traffic brought from the development.
Mr. Bailey, your time's up.
Thank you very much.
I'll mark the end of the time allotted for those speaking against. Mr. Bailey, you have one minute and 50 seconds for rebuttal, if you'd like.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To address one of Mr. Walker's comments about the location of the roundabout on the connector. The letters that I showed and that I'm sure you've seen. All discuss that the median break was to be 660, excuse me, 660 feet south of the center line of the exit ramp, 316, once the interchange was constructed. So the letter written by Wayne Shackelford in 1997, a letter written in 2009 by former Commissioner Chairman Melvin Davis, and then that written four weeks ago by Meg Perkel, all relate to that 660 feet difference. So that is the right location. Now, as far as the review by the DOT, it's clear that the DOT did not do a good job of research of the records that they had in their files to even come up with the suggestion that that median break should have ever been closed. Had they done their research correctly, they wouldn't have made that recommendation. And when others above that person who made that recommendation were aware of it, the recommendation got changed. It wasn't overridden by someone who didn't know the facts. There was an agreement that was consummated many, many years ago. And it's just a matter of whether the people that entered that agreement are going to keep that agreement or not. So there's a lot of history on that. And I'm happy to talk as much as I'm allowed to talk about it. Thank you.
With that, we'll go ahead and close the public comment section of the hearing and open up any questions from commissioners.
I've got, maybe I'll start with it. We're talking about even with the recent modification that Mr. Bailey presented tonight, we're still talking in that neighborhood of 14,000.
That's correct. Their traffic study showed 14,000 and that, you know, that is with taking out that pass-by count, you know. So if you include all the trips and our traffic consultant is here and can speak to that more, probably better than I can. But if you include all of their trips in their traffic study, shown in their traffic study, it's 21,900 trips entering that property at full buildout. Then you take out the pass-by trips and then that gets you down to the 14,000. So either way, it is a tremendous increase over what's approved now, roughly 7,000 ADTs for, for what's shown there, what's it's on for currently.
Yeah, I found a potential spot, but it seems to me even, even if the owner were to do what is currently zoned, start pulling permits, the increase of 7,000 could be problematic on Mars Hill.
It, it could be, certainly. There'll be entrances on Mars Hill. And currently, the traffic counts, I think we see that GDOT has, has shown is roughly 4,000, 4,300, something like that.
Alex, can you pull up that aerial, start with that point? Prefer to evolve that way up for past few months. It helps me to look at these aerials, if I may stand up. And it, this may be inaccurate because there've been several additions of it, but the issue with Mars Hill Road to me, you've got 20,000 count out here. This is 4390, I think, 4330. Two-lane road with this count out here. I don't think anybody knows it. If we can go to Expert Center 1, because Expert Center 1 was used by Mr. Bailey as an example of square footage. Look at the roads. Three red lights. It's four-lane, not counting the turn lights. Hardly, hardly a good example. I mean, it's one thing that you want to use square footage, but the roads don't match up. They just don't match up. And if we go, can we go to the Coles? Because I think Cole's right now is the number two buildout rezon. Coles has a nice road to County Bill leading into Parkway here, Expert Parkway. Now, the traffic count on, guy, you're gonna have to help me now. You know, the traffic count over at Expert Center 1, average daily is 18,000, and at Expert Center 2 is 15,000, right?
Yes, sir. Those were the ADTs that were submitted with the rezon.
So my, my point being, this is not a good example to use because it has infrastructure on the road. So, Mr. Bailey, you want to comment? That's fine, but I'm looking at the map and looking at the roads, and Mars Hill does not stack up. I don't care how many entries, entrances we use, you still got 14,000 to 21,000 cars on a two-lane road. Versus over here where Expert Center 1 is and the Hobby Lobby area, those roads are, they are roads made to move people to shopping areas.
I would just say, Mr. Horton, that there are a lot of trips on the Elkhorni Connector. And once this overpass is constructed, that is planned to be constructed, the stack-up of traffic that occurs today will no longer occur at the intersection of the Elkhorni Connector and with 316. I mean, a lot of people complain about the traffic out there because when there's so much traffic that the traffic can't move through 316, then it causes waits. But the whole purpose of this overpass is to eliminate the 316 traffic from causing an encumbrance on the Elkhorni Connector. The Elkhorni Connector will then become a flyover over 316. And you won't even have to come into contact with any of the traffic on 316 to get to the shopping areas on the other side of Highway 316 or the other side of Paul Brown Parkway, because there will be that flyover, which has been planned to go there since all the way back in 1997, when the owners of the subject property were shown two different drawings that showed median breaks to access their property at that location. One of them was for the two-lane construction, showed future median break. The other one was after the overpass was put in and the all-ramps were put in, and it was a full-access median break. But yes, the road over in front of Expert Center, because I think for quite a number of years, there were road improvements going on there. Tangle Brook Road that was extended to tie into Elkhorni Connector. And Elkhorni Connector itself extended from Expert Parkway to connect 316 and Elkhorni Connector. All that was part of the long-range planning, just like this zoning in this zoning district is part of the long-range planning. And it, and it's consistent with basically all of the zoning criteria that we're supposed to meet. And we don't have any problem meeting any of the zoning criteria. The problem that we have is meeting some of the access criteria. And so we've tried to come up with a better way of accessing it. It's not the only way that we can access, but we thought that we came up with the roundabout scenario with a better way for the people using this property to be able to access the roads with the Elkhorni Connector being the primary road. And I know as much about that road and the traffic as anybody does, because I go through that intersection anywhere from four to 20 times a day because I live on the east side of it and I work on the west side of it. So if I leave the office, I'm going through that intersection. There's the peak hour of intersection time in the morning is a period between 7:30 and 8 o'clock. It's a 20-minute window. If you get there before 7:30, you don't back up in traffic. If you get there after 8 o'clock, you don't back up in traffic. And I'm talking about the traffic going across the connector and onto Mars Hill Road. That's all school traffic and people going to work traffic. Soon as that's over, there's no traffic issue. Now, there'll be nobody working in the shopping center during those periods. Shopping Center won't even open up. The grocery store will open up at 8 o'clock, and the shops in the shopping center will open up to 9 or 10 o'clock, just like over at Expert Center. So there's really no additional traffic during the peak times of day that people are experiencing problems right now.
Mr. Bailey, I've been at the seed planting commission. And I think there was, maybe it was you or somebody else considering maybe 1,000 employees to build out. And they got to get there in the morning.
The entire development. That's not just.
But there's going to be employees, so whatever.
There'll be employees stocking before 8 o'clock. That's correct. But the grocery store won't open up for business until people are out actually.
If it builds out, it's 322,000 square feet, right?
For the entire project.
Exactly. Let me ask you this while you're there. What kind of trucks would be serving that facility, the entire facility and build-out that aren't on Mars Hill Road now? What kind of trucks?
Well, we envision that the majority of the trucks going to and from the development will be coming in Elkhorni Connector and into the front entrance and then back out.
Right in, right out?
No, I'm talking about the roundabout location.
Well, that hasn't been decided.
And well, it's going to be either a roundabout or it's going to be an interchange. I mean, a signalized intersection.
Right in, right out, could it?
I don't believe you've ever seen a right-in, right-out with a median break, though. They don't put median breaks in for right-in, right-outs.
Well, that brings up another question of whether or not the state can tell the county what to do on that road. Is Mr. Boswell told me that it's going to be turned back to town?
I, I'm not qualified to actually. A lot of people in this room are qualified to answer that question.
But you, you would think the tractor-trailers would be in that area. Softstream trucks, beer trucks, bread trucks, public trucks.
Certainly. That's what the future land use plan suggests should happen out there.
On Mars Hill.
Not on Mars Hill.
You can't say whether it's going to be there or not.
Well, the people who are coming in and out of the project driving the truck are not going to go down a road that they can't make a, a turn to get out onto with trucks. So they're going to go back to the main. Very close to the intersection.
I got a couple of questions while you're here. So the property was originally zoned in 1992, the, the big parcel.
The B, the B1, MPD portion. That's correct.
So it was like a PUD total. And then the B2 portion was zoned in '88. Was that correct?
That's correct.
So in 1997, when the agreement was reached, that was a B1 zoning for that parcel, having access back to the connector for the drawings.
Actually, there wasn't a connector contemplated at the time of that draw. That rezon predated any discussion of the Elkhorni Connector because the intersection, the interchange was not going to be at that location. It was going to be further east at the intersection of Jennings Mill Road. It was gonna be further east at the intersection of Jennings Mill Road and Epsbridge Road. And it was around nineteen ninety-five, I wanna say, when the discussion changed to not putting in a, leaving an at-grade intersection at that location. I'm sure many of you remember back when that was actually constructed. That's how you got onto three sixteen back at that period of time. But there was this idea of shifting that to the west and that relocated Epsbridge Road. I mean, that's what the DOT named the plans, the relocated Epsbridge Road improvements. That's when the first discussion about the O'Conne Connector took place.
Which was ninety-seven?
I think they started around ninety-five and, and then drawings started being prepared in ninety-six.
Okay, but Commissioner Shackleford's letter in nineteen ninety-seven, where it was talking about the six hundred and sixty feet. That property was on the B-one at that time, when they started those conversations.
The corner was already zoned, not for, there's two different properties, the B-one piece.
Was on, that's where, that's where the median break is showing right now. The six hundred and sixty feet is to gain access to the B-one track.
That's correct.
Okay. And that was on B-one at the time of the agreement or the letter from Commissioner Shackleford. It was on B-one.
That's correct.
And that, that plan also showed access to, back to Virgil Langford Road.
That's correct. And at the time, the DOT was gonna have that as a right-in, right-out only. So if you went out that, there was a road that went from Mars Hill Road and went all the way back and out, as you suggest. And that was, you could make a left on the Virgil Langford and you could make a right on the Virgil Langford and then a right onto the Highway three sixteen. Long before there were plans for the overpasses.
Yeah. So, so it looks like the last communication from the Commissioner and Mr. Walker were early nineteen ninety-seven, February, March timeframe. That sound right?
There was the, the communication from Wayne Shackleford, but then there were subsequent communications from the property owner to others at the DOT.
Know what section your timeline was in?
There's DOT correspondence back and forth, starting in ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight. Then there's kind of a, a gap there for a while.
Yes, that's kind of what I'm talking about. So from March eighteenth nineteen ninety-seven, there appears to be no communication from, from GDOT. And then in July of nineteen ninety-seven, there was an agreement signed and ratified by the Board of Commissioners related to curb cuts along Mars Hill Road and also the O'Conne Connector.
That's correct. For all the parcels that were going to be created by the O'Conne Connector and the realignment of Mars Hill Road and Epsbridge Road. There were four different parcels created on the southern side of three sixteen. They didn't just agree to donate the right-of-way for the O'Conne Connector. They agreed to a price well before the three sixteen was constructed at a price. And there are letters in the files that talk about those negotiations. But the, the agreement, I don't mean to butt in, but the agreement specifically talked about the driveway access points because they didn't talk about the median break access because the drawings had already been prepared or already shown to the owners to get them to agree to the donation at that time. So when the DOT shows you a plan and it's a median break and they tell you it's gonna be a median break, then you assume it's gonna be a median break.
Yeah.
And so there's no discussion, there's no negotiation. You already know what they're gonna do.
But, but as far as where the Board of Commissioners sit and, and our previous assessors, their agreement was only for curb cuts at Station Thirty-seven on the connector and then the other three on the other, on Mars Hill Road.
There were multiple, there was at least two access points for each parcel that was created that fronted on both roads.
So, and even the, when the access was granted at the six hundred and sixty-foot mark, it was a B-one zoning with access back to Virgil Langford. And whether GDOT looked at that or not, that was the facts.
Yeah.
In play at the time.
Yeah, there was access to the O'Conne Connector and there were two access points in the agreement between O'Conne County and the property owners to access Mars Hill Road.
And, and the average daily trips for the recent, the current zoning on the B-one property. And if you count the B-one, say it's forty-five or fifty thousand square feet, it's about seven thousand trips per day. Does that sound, I don't know if you, you hadn't had time, but that's what we're showing, it'd be seven thousand.
About right.
And now the, the request to rezone now, there's no access back to Virgil Langford Road. You don't, you don't have the ability to have access to Virgil Langford Road?
Well, what we, there was a, a staff recommendation that we, on future submittals, that we locate an inner parcel access, which we encourage and the county encourages. Because when they build the overpass, when the DOT builds the overpass over Virgil Langford Road, because it's gonna be built up with embankments to support the overpass, then the, the subject property won't have access because the road will be built up too high. So the only access it will have to Virgil Langford Road would be through an easement through the adjoining property.
So none to start with. I mean, eventually someday there'll be access.
That's correct.
So. The current zoning that's been requested with the site plan is twenty-one thousand trips per day?
I couldn't say.
Okay.
We didn't do the traffic impact analysis.
Well, the traffic study shows twenty-one thousand. And then as Guy mentioned, there's some subtraction of seven, I don't get that. But it looks like the development's gonna generate twenty-one thousand trips in and out.
Yeah.
There's also a lot of talk about Chairman Davis's two thousand and nine communication. But the current owner purchased this property in two thousand and six. The, all three parcels, the R-one, the B-two and the B-one. It, it looks like that all those communications in two thousand and nine are related to access across the street, related to the fire station. Because that's when the design, I think, was going on for Mars Hill Phase One. So I'm a little, if anything in your records, why the full median access breaks were not put in at the design time?
Well, it's because there was no development there for them to go to yet, because three sixteen hadn't been built. I mean, O'Conne Connector had not yet been built.
This was when O'Conne Connector was being built, I believe, the access back to. Mars Hill was four-lane from Butler's Crossing back. Or when those plans were being developed. There was no full median access break for both sides of the road for the, the current owners, the, the three tracks, the B-one track, we'll say, versus across the road with Mr. McDonald and Mr. Keller still on that side in two thousand and nine. So the letters that Chairman Davis were writing seemed to be related to giving access, median access break to the parcel across the street next to QT, which was directly related to the fire station access. So we could get the engines, fire engines out to do left-hand maneuvers and right maneuver straight onto the connector.
Well, there's two things. There was, there was already a, a, a use on the property. And, and the county wanted access to the O'Conne Connector since it was gonna be there. And so they, there was an agreement between the property owners and the county to provide access easement across their property to get from the fire station to the median break. But the median break wasn't put in there for the fire station. When, when the original letter was written, the, the DOT, and this is, these documents are recorded in the courthouse of O'Conne County. The deed that was recorded in the courthouse basically had limited access from Virgil Langford Road along the entire frontage of Highway three sixteen. You turn onto the O'Conne Connector and then down all the way to a point where the access, the BLA, Begin Limited Access, is noted on the plan. Which means you can have a driveway there, which happened to be where the median break was located. On the opposite side of the road. And our clients at the time, the McDonald's and the Killers, owned the piece that was cut off to be on the other side, beside the fire station. So the, the discussion back in that agreement was that the easement would be granted from the fire station property across our client's property at the time and to the median break. Which, again, on the other side of the road, there was also a BLA. You begin limited access opposite the same point on the other side of the O'Conne Connector. So there's documentation that suggests that that median break was always supposed to be there. It was always supposed to be for both sides of the road. And to my knowledge, there are no median breaks that have ever been put anywhere, which limited anybody to a right-in, right-out.
Well, the way it's designed, there's no way to do a left end to the subject property we're talking about now, based on the design.
Are you, are you meaning the design that's on the ground today?
Yes, yeah. And I, and I know all this was broached in two thousand and nine, that's what generated some of the letters, but it appears all that was directed toward the side of the road where the fire station was on. Because I don't find any record of any communication with the current owner in reference to median breaks and curb cut access at the six sixty mark during that timeframe.
No, I don't, I don't know that there would need to be any because there were deeds recorded that showed where the Begin Limited Access was gonna be and where it was gonna end.
And then you, you also mentioned the, or we brought, I think, Ms. Walker talked about. GDOT originally, without knowledge of the agreement from nineteen ninety-seven, purely looking at the traffic counts and the trip generations, said it should only be right-in, right-out access. That was from the District One and also from the consulting engineers that are doing the design on the roadway. And that kind of matches up with what staff consultant has said as well. You mentioned once upper management learned of the, the documents, they, they made the decision to allow the median break. Was, was anything communicated, reference to this rezone, to Meg Perkel showing the increased traffic and what the reason, because we're, we're losing access to Virgil Langford Road, where three times the amount of trips generated. Oh, and then, was anything commu, did she have that information in her decision-making process that you know of?
I am not aware of anything, of any documents. I think Mr. Herring could probably give you a better idea about that. I never had any communications with Meg or anyone else at the Georgia Department of Transportation concerned in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you pull back up on the very first slide we showed, was it roundabout? Yeah, this is a question for you and it's, it's, I mean, I, it's because I'm trying to understand what Chuck and John were talking about the medium and everything. So that roundabout, does that fall within the functional limits of the interchange? Would you, your best guess?
That's a, that's a good question.
Your best guess, does that fall within that functional limits of the interchange at all?
You know, I, I, I'm not aware of, of where those functional limits are at this time. I think it's under design. But if I can, let me bring our traffic consultant out.
Yeah, sure, absolutely, because that's important.
And let's see if he can help with that question.
I mean, I don't know the distance, I mean, I have no idea what the distance from the off-roundness to the roundabout, but I'm just curious. To me, it seems like the roundabout would not fall within the functional limits of the interchange.
Well, if, if what Mr. Bell said is correct, the, if, if, if the BLA, Begin Limited Access point is at that point, then Georgia DOT from way back when felt that the interchange would be north of those Begin Limited Access. Limited Access is where you buy full rights of access and no one can put a, put a curb cut there. So at the time, they felt that the functional limits of the interchange would go down at six hundred and sixty feet. If, if what Mr. Bell's saying is correct, at that existing median break, that's where the, the BLA begins.
All the way through the roundabout, you think?
Well, probably at some point, you know, right about just before, right at the roundabout.
Right at the roundabout.
Yeah, assuming, you know, that's, that, that six hundred and sixty, if, did you have a, a laser pointer? You know, assuming that the, the limited access comes down that, that right-of-way line to about right there, then at the time, Georgia DOT would be assuming that, that they're gonna buy limited access rights all the way to that median break. And anything beyond that is, is not essentially part of the interchange.
Okay, I mean, I, I guess, I mean, I understand that. So we just don't know exactly where the BLA starts as far as the, the limit starts, but is it, I mean, where there starts at the very beginning of the roundabout or in the roundabout?
Yes. Presentation, I'll show you exactly where it is.
It is one of the last slides. We've circled on these lower exhibits. The one on the lower left is when that was a two-lane, the first two lanes of the O'Conne Connector. And the red circle, or excuse me, the red lips that you see circles the notation and gives a station number of the ELA, the end of the limited access. Then straight down below that, on the opposite side of the road, because those are, those notations are based on the, the traffic flow. The traffic flow is coming to that point. The access, the limited access ends and access to the property can begin at that point. And the same is true for that on the southern, that's the Begin Limited Access. So a driveway can occur anywhere up to that point, and then beyond that point, there cannot be an access driveway. Now, the image on the right is a later version. One that shows the O'Conne Connector as a four-lane road with the off-ramps coming from the north and the on-ramps to Highway three sixteen going to the south. And it shows the actual meeting, median break that was on those DOT construction plans. And the same ELA on the northern side or on the top side of this road and the same BLA on the lower side. So anything beyond that is actually, then the center line, the six hundred and sixty, is further to the left from those points.
So you're currently telling us that those lines exist within the entire roundabout? That the roundabout falls within those lines?
Yes.
Every bit of it?
The entire roundabout could be built as far as the, from where the right-of-way defines the BLA and the ELA. It could entirely be built at that point. The same was true for the median break.
And, and those lines would have been built, and obviously this is, I mean, this is more than twenty years ago. They, they would have had to say, look, we're gonna carry, because when you buy rights, that's extremely expensive for the property owner. So they, they, they would have said, hey, where do we think, how far do we wanna think we take it? It doesn't mean that if they went through today and built an interchange, they wouldn't buy more right-of-way. There's, I promise you, they're gonna buy more right-of-way, even though they've got a lot out there. It's just at the time, they had to try and set the limits of where they thought, you know, the right-of-way would be needed for this long distance. And it's, it's good advanced planning by the department, but they had to try and set some limit of, of where they felt their, their interchange needed to be done.
Would you mind saying your name and company for a record, please?
My, my name is Pat Smeaton. I work for a company called Trans Systems. We are a transportation consultant.
So what you're saying is that over time, things could change?
That's correct. I mean, this, this is twenty years ago.
If something was said twenty years ago in the road businesses. If something was said twenty years ago in the road business, is that always gonna be?
Well, I mean, it's, Ms. Perkel's a very good, you know, engineer. We're, we're really lucky to have her. The department is just, you know, if they, they have to honor agreements they make, because these are long processes. Building roads is a very long process, so when we make agreements with property owners, we, we have to try and honor those, and that's what she's doing. I mean, she's, it, it, it's kinda, it's irregardless of what type of developments going in there. If, if they made an agreement when they built a project to, to allow an access point, they kinda have to honor that. Otherwise, people wouldn't wanna go into agreements with them in the future.
Well, let me ask you this, if things change, does the DOT look at change?
They, they certainly do. Yeah, they, they certainly do.
So, if, and that's the question I had earlier, was if DOT can, if, if the road belongs to the county, can DOT say you got to do this?
No, i- i- if, if this is a state route, or if it's on the state road system, or it's on the temporary state road system, which it may be because of the project that was built, they, they do have the right to say that if this is a county road, it's within the limits of the county road, no, they, they cannot. And, and I don't know if this is county roads.
Well, I was told it's going back, can be returned back to us, so.
Well, that's why I was asking the functional limits distance, because, I mean, we, Mr. Modus is on record, the District One engineer, saying that this belongs to the county. And the functional limits of the interchange is gonna dictate where we take over, control the road, where, you know, we control any median breaks and all that stuff. So, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, if you don't mind. So, current zoning, either the B one or the B two would facilitate a publics?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Both are allowed by right, and either of those two zones that exist now? Alright, thank you.
Well, Mr. Herring, while, while you're there, I've got a question on the, uh, it was discussion about the limited access from Virgil Langford to the O'Conne Connector. So, on the DOT plan, it's showing that that is a off-ramp road and not a limited access. Have you got any documentation about what that road actually is gonna be, or do we even know?
Yeah, so Virgil, our understanding, Virgil is going to be a flyover with no access to three sixteen.
Okay. So, the limited access from Virgil to O'Conne Connector, would that be on the, the southern side of three sixteen, or would that be on the northern side?
Um, I'm not sure the, uh, I'm not sure of the, of that question.
It was just a statement earlier about that, so I was just trying to clarify where that limited access road is gonna be. If it even occurs.
You're talking about the off-ramp? I mean, I don't know that final engineering's done, but. You're talking about where the Virgil Langford Cross is actually over the ramp? Yeah. I saw that too. I'm not sure, I think that was just preliminary sketching. I don't know that any engineering was done, or they were even talking about a flow at that time. So, I don't know how that was gonna shake out either, but. The first point I was making was, there was, when the original agreement was made, it was access to Virgil Langford, then we had three times less the traffic when those breaks were initially contemplated.
Um, and I guess this might be a question for our traffic consultant, but would that be something that could be designed in this area? A limited access from Virgil Langford to O'Conne Connector to be able to pick up traffic out of this development and other developments that might be on between, say, Marcell and Virgil Langford?
Do you mean some sort of ramp to the overpass?
Well, basically, a collector road from the Virgil Langford down to the connector, and that'd be in the DOT right-of-way.
The, the spacing's very close for right-of-ways. I, I know when we met, when we had a, a conversation with DOT, their, their, their plan is to put a, a grade separation with an interchange at Jimmy Daniel and three sixteen, and overpass at Virgil Langford, and then a grade separation with interchange at, at O'Conne Connector. And I, I, I think it would be very tight, it would, it would, it would add quite a bit of cost to start, we'd have to start braiding ramps, we'd have to start weaving ramps in and out of there to, to give access to, to Virgil Langford. Yeah, I, I, we, we kinda looked at the same thing, but I think it's, I think the proximity would, would, you know, it, it would add a lot of cost to that project, unfortunately.
Well, I guess, my point is, is that, you know, traffic is a major concern in this whole area. And so, if we could have some type of a collector road, that would be part of the project, you know, that would help O'Conne County and this whole interchange. I, I think that would be a, a great thing to look at.
Yeah, no, I, I, certainly, and, and, you know, the project is in the very early design stage. I mean, you know, what, what the department has done right now, they've got a consultant under, under contract, but they're, I mean, they're at the very conceptual level. So, I think it's certainly something that your staff could work with department and see, hey, how, how can we try and mitigate, you know, the, the, the traffic impact? And, and provide access to these, cause Virgil Langford being an overpass certainly helps relieve O'Conne Connector somewhat, uh, but if you could get access. But again, the department is looking at making all three sixteen a true freeway, which means, you know, it's all fully limited access type facilities. It's all freeway looking type facilities.
Thank you. Any other questions? Very good. With that, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to deny rezone number P two zero dash zero two one zero, deferred tax LLC, Marshall Road, O'Conne Connector, Georgia Highway, three sixteen, Virgil Langford Road, forty-six point eight seven acres, R one, B one, P U D, and B two, two B two, for development of a shopping center.
Second. Very good. We have a motion and a second to deny rezone number P two zero zero two one zero. This is forty-six point eight seven acres. The questions go from R one, B one, P U D, and B two, uh, to a B two highway district with development of a shopping center. Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Be opposed?
Aha.
A motion carries, thank you. Our next item is consider. Next item is consider special use number P two one dash zero zero two eight. This is Westminster Christian Academy. Sixteen forty and fifteen ninety, New High Shoals Road, it's forty point seven four acres. Uh, zoning A G and R one, this is for special use for a temporary modular classroom building.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, again. This is special use P twenty.
Second guy, hold on a second.
I can yell.
Is that a motion? Very good. Okay, go ahead, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, again. This is special use P twenty zero zero two eight, Westminster Christian Academy, located, uh, on.
Hold on just a second. Ladies and gentlemen, if you don't mind, we have some additional business. If you would, don't mind stepping into the hallway for us, thank you.
Located on New High Shoals, uh, the two parcels and the aerial, uh, are, are in your packets. Um, again, this is on D A G and R one, and it is in the, um, it is a, a community village and, um, rural, that's, uh, a traditional, I bet, sorry. Uh, the applicant has requested special use approval for a temporary modular classroom. Uh, the location is proposed, uh, right here in the middle of the property. Next to the fields, and, uh, staff recommends a conditional approval with, uh, two conditions. Planning Commission recommends approval subject to the same conditions.
Thank you. Now, we're here from the owner of the agent of the owner.
Good evening. My name is Joseph Bates of Smith Planning Group at ten twenty-two, twelve Oak Circle. Um, speaking tonight is the applicant for, uh, on behalf of Westminster Christian Academy. Hopefully, this request is a little simpler and not as complex as the previous one. A quick review and update, it's planning, uh, a, a special use plan was approved in December of twenty seventeen for the master plan of, uh, or what Westminster Christian Academy is calling their master plan. Uh, entails adding a second entrance off of New High Shoals Road, doubling the building square footage, and constructing a private lift station. So, a good bit of infrastructure, um, to, to, to build out this next phase. Since then, Westminster Christian Academy, uh, since the approval of the special use plan, they've been raising funds to begin constructing the master plan. And I please announce that they're, uh, preparing detailed architectural and site civil plans, uh, with the hopes of breaking ground in the near future. This request for an additional, uh, temporary modular classroom is really based on two reasons. Uh, first, WCA has been at full capacity for a while, and they need more classroom space for the current student body. But they don't wanna hastily build the master plan. They want to build this thing right, they wanna get the infrastructure that they need and to build quality, uh, buildings. And so, they're not just projecting here for the next few years, but the next few decades. And, uh, they see this next phase as the new mass, the, the new main campus. Uh, so, they wanna do it right, and it just takes time, uh, to build something that lasts. And secondly, this request for a temporary, uh, modular classroom is in response to the pandemic. And the need to provide safe social distance space for students, uh, when this request was, was submitted, it was right around the time the vaccines were rolling out. And, um, hopefully, the pandemic is quickly coming to an end, but WCA wants to be cautious and proactive and be prepared. Ultimately, the approval of this request allows WCA to continue to provide, uh, quality education as the county, the faculty, the students eagerly anticipate the, the imminent build-out of the master plan. Uh, finally, concerning the conditions, WCA, uh, accepts the conditions, uh, of approval. So, thank you for your time, and I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak for this, uh, special use? Anyone virtually? Does anyone wish to speak against? Anyone virtually? With that, we'll go ahead and close the public comments and open up to any questions from Commissioners. Very good. We'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve special use number P twenty-one dash zero zero two eight, Westminster Christian Academy, Smith Planning Group, sixteen forty and fifteen ninety High Shoals Road, forty point seven four acres, A G, and R one, request a special use approval of temporary modular classroom building with two conditions.
Second. We have a motion and second to approve special use number P two one zero zero two eight with two conditions. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Thank you. Motion carries. Our next item is consider rezone number P two one dash zero zero two nine, this is Wayman L. and Betty Sue Ash, eleven twenty Berta Drive, it's five acres. So, current zoning is AR, the requests go from AR to AR with modifications to rezone number two nine five to decrease the lot size.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, again. This is P twenty-one zero zero two nine. It's located off Berta Drive, uh, you see the subject parcel and aerial photography. Uh, it's currently zoned AR, uh, with conditions on the rezone number two nine five. It is in the country states, uh, character area. And again, the rezones request to go from AR to AR with modifications to, uh, condition number two, uh, rezon two nine five, which would not allow the lot count to be increased nor the lot size decreased without, uh, your approval. And, uh, that is, the request is before you today. The concept plan shows, uh, this is the subject parcel that will be split and decreased to this lot size, and then this portion will be combined uh, with the adjacent property, uh, same owner. And so, thus, the lot count will not increase, but the lot size would, would decrease. And again, planning commission, I mean, uh, staff recommends approval with one condition, planning commission recommends approval with that same condition.
Now, we're here from the owners or the agent of the owners. Just come up and state your name and, and your address for the record and just.
Um, I'm Angie Ash, eleven forty Berta Drive. And basically, it's gonna be the same, nothing's changing, except that we'll absorb the three acres from my husband's parents, so.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak for this rezone? Anyone virtually? Does anyone wish to speak against? Anyone virtually? With that, we'll go ahead and close the public comment section and open up to any questions from Commissioners. Here, now, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve rezone number P twenty-one dash zero zero two nine, Wayman L. and Betty Sue Ash. With, with the two conditions.
Is it one or two? One condition? Very good. We have a motion and second to approve rezon P two zero two one dash zero zero two nine with one condition. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next item is the presentation of FY twenty-two budget proposal, Wes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you all know, we've been working diligently on the FY twenty-two budget. Um, the, uh, presenting tonight, uh, the requested amount for FY twenty-two and in a recommended expenditure amount. Commissioners, you have that in front of you for your review. And, uh, a couple of numbers that I wanna highlight. Uh, the expenditure requests were for FY twenty-two from the Department has constitutional officers was thirty-three million, one hundred forty thousand and eighty-three dollars. And the FY twenty-two expenditure recommended for approval is thirty-two million, five hundred ninety-six thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars. I wanted to get this out there for your review, give it a couple of weeks. We're gonna, um, review the revenues. Uh, we just got in our local option sales tax for, uh, last month, uh, two days ago. And, uh, so, we'll, we'll look at some revenue projections and, and uh, put those in there, and then I'll come back to you with, uh, a balanced budget on May twenty-fifth with a complete fee schedule and, um, complete revenue, complete splotch, but the general fund expenditures are in, and these are the recommendations. That, uh, next public hearing, uh, to discuss that balanced budget will be May twenty-fifth at five thirty PM. And then, uh, we'll ask for budget adoption on our regularly scheduled meeting on June first. There's a lot of information there, uh, but, um, we feel confident that we can come back with a balanced budget on, on the twenty-fifth. Uh, very similar to, um, previous year's budget. And, um, not a whole lot of change, to be honest with you. There is a split between the IT and the GIS department, you'll notice. So, those two are, are listed separately, cause in twenty-two, they'll be separate departments.
Thank you, Wes. And there'll be probably some slight changes in these numbers. We're still fine-tuning a couple of things that are still coming in. Not a material change. We don't expect any material changes in what we have here. Also, we'll have splotch budget ready and closing out, uh, projections for closing out the two thousand fifteen splotch. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you. All right, our next item is consider adoption of the twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-four strategic plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. If you recall last week, I presented the, uh, strategic plan for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-four, essentially what, um, your staff will be working on over the next four years. Includes a mission vision and then four strategic goals. You have the one question or comment that was brought up by the Commissioners had to do with objective three under goal four by Commissioner Harden, uh, which dealt with the, um, pedestrian trail opportunities, expansion, potentially cycling. My question prior to adoption is whether you wish to keep it currently as-is or amend it from pedestrian to non-motorized multi-use, which is general, uh, would allow bicycles, um, other blocking, running for other opportunities. It's a general tactic now, and then as we fine-tune it through the public process, that'll, that'll win out into a more specific topic. So, that's the one item that was discussed last week, and so, it's, it's a board's pleasure, whether you keep it as, as presented or, or change it to the more general.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Ken Administrator, for that.
Now, say it again, how you wanna word it.
The, so, instead of pursue pedestrian connectivity plan?
Yeah.
Pursue non-motorized multi-use connectivity plan.
Alright, so, so the cyclist will know what that means.
It, it would, it would allow cyclists to fit under this objective that is correct. No combustible engines, those of that. No combustible engines other than that.
Yeah.
I thought so. We do the change as presented. Have there, just substitute that change for the non-motorized. And, uh, everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Okay, yes, sir. Very good. Any other questions on the strategic plan? We'll entertain a motion to adopt with the change mentioned tonight.
I'm with that motion.
Very good. Very good. A motion and second to adopt the twenty twenty one to twenty twenty four strategic plan with the change noted tonight. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Our next item is for consent agenda. Does any commissioner wish any item to be removed from consent? With that, we'll entertain a motion. Second. We have a motion and second to approve consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. We do not have need of an executive session. So Commissioner Saxon.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you.